Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman Dan Doyle.
Lord, please look over the people that got damaged property and lost their lives because of hurricanes. Continue to look over our state and protect our future of hurricanes throughout the community and the citizens of New Iberia through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markot.
Here.
Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Doyle.
Here.
Thank you. Item one, have any comment cards? I'll ask you this time to put your phones on silent or vibrate. If we had public comment, there'd be no back and forth. And now we're moving on to item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, which will be published on October second, twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo. Is there any discussion of our minutes of September seventeenth? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Clerk three A.
Gary Colton, Executive Director of the Greater Iberia Chamber of Commerce, to discuss the thirty-fourth World Championship Gumbo Cook-Off.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, to Mayor Decourt, the City Council, and the staff of the City of New Iberia. I'm Gary Colton, I'm the Executive Director of the Greater Iberia Chamber of Commerce. And from the Greater Iberia Chamber of Commerce, we want to say thank you for the use of Bollone Plaza and the surrounding areas. We thank you for your guidance and direction for Closing Streets, providing police security and participation in the thirty-fourth Annual Championship Gumbo Cook-Off. We invite you to come and enjoy this festival, made for families to eat and dance and socialize with other people from the community and beyond. There are people from all over the United States and the world that come to check out the Cajun cuisine and culture. And being this is the chamber's fundraiser for the year, it takes a lot of volunteers and sponsors to make it happen. That is why I'm up here in front of you tonight to invite you all to this festival. Saturday is the Cajun Creole Fest with all kinds of food, but gumbo. Live music will play from ten AM to seven PM. So bring your dancing shoes and have some fun. At four PM is the cooking demo and dinner at Bambino's on Main Street. Tickets are still available and you can register on our website, iberiachamber.org/gumbocookoff. Sunday is the competition of competitions. Teams start cooking at six AM with judging at eleven about and serving gumbo after that. Winners will be announced around three PM. On Sunday, we will have more music and dancing too, from ten AM to three thirty PM. We hope you will all come down and join us. Again, we want to thank you because without this partnership and cooperation, none of this would be possible. Thank you again.
Thank you. Item three B.
Raymond Shudu Lewis to announce his candidacy for Iberia Parish Assessor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Raymond Shudu Lewis, candidate for Iberia Parish Assessor. I need to let everyone know in the room and in your viewing audience that under your newly appointed assessor, your taxes have gone up. Your taxes have gone up and they have not mailed it out to you yet. Why, I don't know. Let's talk about experience. Elton Barra raised children, had a wife on the west end of New Iberia. Robertson Street and Jacob Alley, a nickel and dime store. He was the assessor and he was the longest-serving assessor. He came from a nickel and dime grocery store. Francis Romero, a dirt farmer and a cane farmer, became parish president until the day he passed away. Arrow Romo Romero became a plumber, became sheriff, state rep, and he was a police jury. David Ditch came from the medical side and he is currently our clerk of court. Experience, I worked for one of the largest retail companies in the world, where I managed tens of millions of dollars in inventory. Same as the assessor, got to do a lot of research, got to find out where it's at and who owns it. Experience as a city councilman. I've been there to lower ad valorem taxes. I've been as a school board member, I've been there to lower ad valorem taxes and then give property tax owners a break. So let's talk about experience, I have it. Do I need to learn some other things like Mr. Barra, Mr. Romero, and Mr. Ditch? Yes, I do. But what else do I have that the current assessor doesn't have? I could be an advocate. I've worked, remember when I came on the council? One of the first acts we did, Mr. Doyle had been here for years fighting fireworks. Me, Mr. Broussard, Ernest Wilson, and Dan Doyle, we got that passed, didn't we? Uh, Mr. Decourt, the mayor, he called me, I think I was on the school board then. He asked me for a copy of the restructure, we did a police study. He asked me for a copy, he couldn't find his, I located mine and I brought it to his office. What else did we do together, mayor? Steamboat Warehouse was a passion of his. Doing Andrew, I might have called him or he called me. I said, what you doing, Freddie? He was down at the Steamboat Warehouse picking up bricks because he wanted to preserve it. And then, look what we have today. He also called, he said, shoot, we had a hundred thousand dollars. What we did with that hundred thousand dollars? It didn't take me long. I said, Freddie, we put that hundred thousand dollar in a special account in case we would ever bring the police department back. That's how he got the first funding, working together with people. Mr. Broussard, Mr. Broussard, we took, we came up with a plan for Armco Canal, a fifty-year problem, fifty-something-year problem. Me, Mr. Brown, and Troy Abert, Senator Troy Abert. We came together under Mr. Brown's carpool. We discussed matching monies. We said, what, everybody goes to the state and wants money. But what if we do some matching money? Well, the city, we got our colleagues to upper out of the mosquito control money, I think it was a hundred twenty-five thousand. And the parish on the other side, they came up with a hundred thousand dollars. We had two hundred fifty thousand dollars and told Senator Abert, go work with that. I think he brought us back an additional half a million dollars. Mr. Broussard, we're grateful to you because Mr. Broussard had actually gotten some money for railroad crossings from the federal government. He was kind enough to let us take a million dollars from him to add to the Armco Canal project. And long, short story, we were able to get it done and he got his money back. And he closed, we closed some of the railroad crossings that he needed and armed them. Thank you, Mr. Broussard. Working together with people, y'all know me. Y'all know what I've done, y'all have heard the stories. But one thing you never will hear, nobody's ever called me a liar. Transparent, I'm the most transparent candidate in this race. I don't have to lawyer up to come present something to you. I don't have to lawyer up, uh, uh, when asking for public records. My office won't be that way. And my office is also going to be more friendly. You have different ways, you can get homestead exemptions. You can get, if you're a veteran or you're disabled, you can qualify to get an exemption. And I want my office telling people when they come, not people having their ass and dig and dig and dig. I want them to offer that to the public because after all, you're working for the public. People, it's real simple. You got good experience and bad experience. And we've seen in ten months what kind of experience we got in there. Your taxes gone up. Eighty-five percent of this parish is poverty. Yes, probably all of y'all up here can afford your tax increase. But you got eighty-five percent of other people that can't. I thank y'all for listening to me. I thank y'all for not interrupting me because I did not want to feel Trumpian tonight. I was at one event, they brought a Trumpian out of me. But I thank y'all for listening. I am the best qualified, no, I need to back up just right quick there. The shrimp industry in Delcum, I, I, it looks like they're trying to do away with it. The largest ice house, they're closed. The shrimpers got to get ice from somewhere, burn a lot of fuel, come bring whatever they catch in, go back out. I can work with Jacob Landry, I can work with Blake Migas, I can work with Mr. Allen. Delcum needs a new sewer infrastructure. If you think I'm just going to be a nine-to-five office person, that's not who I am. I'm going to get involved in city business, I'm going to get involved in parish business. I want to work with the city of Generec. They need a new water system, a second water facility. I want to be able to help lobby the ears of those who I can catch to help them because they don't have the resources, the industries that we might have in New Iberia, where we can do matching funds. And there are ways around that. Talk to your legislatures and some of them are new, most of them are new. The ones I called, they new, but I'm not new. So I know how to do it and I know what direction to send them. If I don't know, I'm gonna find out, I'm gonna find out and get them in the right direction. You will help Generec, you're gonna help, you're gonna help Delcum. Because it looks like, I said, they're trying to kill the shrimp industry. They gave the crawfish farmers, now I'm gonna step on some toes, they gave the crawfish farmers a little subsidy. And I asked, I asked the governor, I said, well, governor, you gave the crawfish farmers a subsidy. What about the shrimpers? What about the shrimpers? Next time, think about the shrimpers. But as for working together, parish government, it would be no more. This side and that side because I don't have no problem, y'all well know, I don't have no problem calling y'all out publicly, publicly. Publicly. And then I have TV stations that's coming. And again, I am Raymond Shudu Lewis, number sixteen. And mayor, you know, when you and Larry travel to try to attract business, I don't want you to just go as an assessor. Listen what I'm telling you now, I know my community, I live in my community. I want to go and help y'all sell and bring these businesses here. And we got to work together. We got to stop this parish government, city government, we got to stop that. It hasn't done us no good. We growing slow, they leaving, we growing a little bit, but we just got to cut that out. It's time for serious business, it's time for serious change. And before they say, you let me run all night long, I'm gonna end with this here. I challenge Ashley Spiker to mail out people's taxes, new assessed taxes. Don't do it, don't be a coward. And mail it after the election. Ashley Spiker, people wants to see what's their new assessment because Thanksgiving and Christmas are coming. And that's the time that people, if you have it or don't, you tend to spend more money. Raymond Shudu Lewis, number sixteen.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, four A.
Special Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five oh one, Budget Adoption Ordinance, an ordinance adopting a budget for the City of New Iberia for the fiscal year ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there anyone here from the public to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Thank you. Now I need a motion on the main motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markot and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, is there any discussion on the main motion?
Not since we got the updated one.
Okay, good.
You don't have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm walking my book.
Yes, ma'am.
She gave us the new one.
Yes. Everybody's good? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Yeah, but it's been busy to keep this moving.
Yeah.
It's a lot, but it's good. Madam Clerk, four B.
Special Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, thirty-three, An Ordinance Amending the Budget to Adjust Within Five Percent for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-four.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard, Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Anyone from the public to comment on this item? Hearing seen none, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Now I need a main motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there any discussion on the main motion?
So I just had one question.
Sure.
On the dog pound expenses.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just going to spend one seventy-one?
Yes, ma'am, that's our contract amount and that's what we spend. Uh, one fifty, you remember when we started the dog shelter, when we got here, we paid twenty-one thousand dollars a year. We now pay a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
A hundred and twenty-one thousand is the expenses that we are charged for using the dog pound because we got a lot of clients over there, okay? So we have half the dogs, so we are paying half the overhead. The other fifty is for an employee that is, that comes into the city. So that's the way the contract states, so yes, but our total is a hundred and seventy-one.
Okay. I just want, I couldn't remember if it was one twenty-one or one seventy-one.
No, one seventy-one. Anybody else, other comments or questions? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Four C.
Special Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, thirty-four, An Ordinance Amending the Budget to Reflect Operating Transfers As Required by the Auditors.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo. Anybody from the public on this one? Seeing no one, motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markot and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, thank y'all. Um, now I need the main motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on the main motion? Hearing seen none, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Four D.
For Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, thirty-five, An Ordinance Amending the Budget to Reflect Incumbrance, Periovers From Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-four Budget.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard, Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is anybody in the public to comment on this one? No takers, uh, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any discussion? No, no, now I need the main motion, sorry.
Motion.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis.
Second.
Uh, Councilwoman Brooke, Councilwoman Brooke Markot had already made the second. Okay, so we have a first and a second, now is any discussion?
These are just carryovers, right?
Yes, that's the final things that we needed to carry over and then, this is our last thing for the budget, we finished with this one and our new budget's all squared away and we're all done.
Okay.
And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Cool, we got a new budget.
And we got a new spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah, and we can't start spending until November one, so don't get too excited. All right.
Not good job.
Madam Clerk, five A.
Resolution Number twenty-four, one sixteen. A Resolution Awarding Contract to Iberia Aggregates and Construction Materials LLC for the American Rescue Plan Act Drainage Cleanout Project, Area B, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilman Dan Doyle and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. This is the second, this is part of the million dollars that we put aside to clean all the major canals in the city. We've already done one, we have this one and then we have two more to go. And the other two, Chandler's here, I think, good, and the other two are coming out for bid pretty soon because we got to get that committed by the end of the year.
Can we, can you tell us who's on the list for number two?
Yeah, Chandler, come on up.
Yeah, I thought we were going to get him out.
So, as the mayor said, Area B is what's up tonight for award. That's West Admiral Doyle at Marygold, the Upper M-Ten, and Commercial Canal from Ann Street to the city limit line. And then the next section would be called Area C, we have four in that section. That will be coming up in a few weeks and that's going to be the main street, Rue Royale, Sandalwood, and Bay Yard Street.
Okay.
Um, and then the last section would be Area D, which will follow that one within a few weeks after C.
Good, so Ann Street's going to be done in the next group?
The next one coming, yep, yep, that is very much needed. Yes, sir.
Which area is T-BY-U on?
T-BY-U is Area D.
Yeah, I figured the last one going this way.
Yep, right.
Okay.
Anybody else has any other questions, comments?
Mayor, that's from the clean you said on Ann Street, is that big canal coming?
Commercial, right.
The commercial canal?
Yeah. You know, it goes under Admiral Doyle, under that bridge, it's really hard to, that's going to be.
The one that people have been complaining about for ten years.
For the whole time I've been here.
Yeah.
This is our first, and look, we're cleaning canals that have never been cleaned. We're cleaning canals that the attorney can't find the city ever clean, which is pretty unusual.
And I grew up next to one, so.
Yep.
Never been cleaned.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So the one that's going underneath Admiral Doyle, this could be cleaned out all the way to the city limits?
Yes, it is.
And then we're just sending something to the parish because?
Well, I mean, we keep talking about it and at some point, we're going to have all the canals cleaned and a whole lot more water's coming, but, uh, you know, we can only go up to the parish line.
Do we ever send anything to them?
I mean, they know we're doing this, but we can send something again, you know, I don't have a problem doing that.
Now, mayor, the parish heck started cleaning out up towards the city though, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, they do their maintenance and they clean, so we're just catching up.
Not there.
You know?
Not there.
Well, there's some, there's some areas that we're going to have some sections that we will clean up to the line that I think they're going to have to come back and do.
Correct.
Some, you know, some more work, but they, you know, parish government is supposed to, you know, they have a lot more drainage issues than us and a lot bigger area and they got bigger equipment than us. So this is the first time the city's ever undertaken, you know, we took a million dollars and set it aside to do this, but this is the first time the city's ever done some comprehensive cleaning of all the canals.
Right.
So, mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
The last time we talked about this, we did talk about possibly sending a letter to them saying, these are the ones that we're going to clean so that, because like for Ann Street, we can clean up to Admiral Doyle, but then if they don't clean on their side, that water's going to start to slow down.
We can do that, we can, I can get with Chandler and we can put together, show everything we clean and he has the list, so we'll just put together a letter and send the whole list.
Yeah, because what, I mean, we need them to do their part too, otherwise the people on Ann Street won't get all the benefits they could.
Right, and I'm not saying they haven't because there could be a lot of areas that the parish has taken care of it, but sending the letter's a good idea.
Yeah, that particular area, it doesn't look like it's been cleaned in a while.
Yeah, well, we can just send them a letter that shows all four, all four phases and that, you know, we're going to let those bids by the end of the year, so give them some heads up.
Just connect the dots.
Yeah, connect the dots. Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. Put some people to work, thank you all very much, thank you. All right, five B.
Resolution Number twenty-four, one seventeen. A Resolution Approving Change Order Number Two for the Sewer System Improvements Project, FPNC Number Fifty, ML One, Twenty Oh One, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is a decrease change R, the kind we like.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Any discussion on this item?
Sixty-eight thousand?
Sixty-eight thousand dollar decrease. Oh, we're going to spend it somewhere else, but let's save it while we can. Yeah, yeah, sewer, that's what I'm getting at, we have so much need in sewer. Anyway, you have the discussion? Then please vote your machines, thank you. Okay, when I bring one that's an increase, give me some slack. Uh, five C. Yeah, I was kind of stretching, but anyway. Uh, five C.
Resolution Number twenty-four dash one eighteen. A Resolution Approving Change Order Number Three for the American Rescue Plan Act Project Upgrades to Steamboat Pavilion and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goncalo, and we have David Allen to talk to us about it. I think they're asking for fifty-something days, fifty-seven, I think.
Fifty-seven days.
Yeah, we're just bringing the contract up to date on the days for construction. So they're asking for fifty-seven days, that takes them for the months of June, July, and August for the rain delays and wet conditions. So it brings a substantial completion to October twenty-ninth. Bear in mind, September, we have some days. October, we have days and we also have festival event days too that we'll be bringing forth when that time comes.
It'll be the end of the year. Well, it will. Questions, yes, sir.
So Dave, since they signed the contract, they had someone working there every day. Someone was on the job except if it's a rain day or a day that we needed the space for.
Yeah, they work seven days a week if they could. Some days they don't, but I mean, they have the option to work seven days a week. But they have been times where they're working on the weekends.
And on the rain days, do you sign off on that prior to them calling for a rain day or they just?
I review their log of days and then any delays because of that, you know, the wet, wet conditions and things like that, then yeah, I review it and present it to y'all.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
It's starting to look like something, which is nice.
That it is, that it is.
Oh, yeah.
And it is, you know, it's a pain this year for all the fairs and festivals that are going on, but it's, you know, look at the benefits, it's going to really be nice.
It'll be better next year.
That's right. Anybody else? Then please vote your machines. Thank you, and I thank all of the fairs and festivals and all those associations for being patient with us because it has impacted them and it does change the way they lay out, change the, they're doing more work to put their events on, but they're all going well and like I said, next year's going to be the benefit. Uh, might as well stay up there, Dave. Uh, five D.
Resolution Number twenty-four, one nineteen. A Resolution Approving Certificate of Substantial Completion For The Bayou Teche Museum Project, Phase Three, Doc Vorey's Wing, FPNC Number Fifty, ML One, Seventeen Oh Two, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson Reed. Is there any, Dave, you want to tell us about this one?
Yeah, so this is the last step in the construction process. We are declaring substantial completion on the project and we're asking you guys to vote on that. Um, the contractor is up to ninety-five percent complete on the project. We've done a punch list, myself and my engineers to review all the deficient items in the building. Um, at this point, the contractor's doing last bit efforts to clean up and just little miscellaneous things. So we do some photos of the project.
I was just about to ask.
Yeah, it's all interior work, so you really have been seeing a lot, oh, that's some progress of the other site too.
Want to go backwards?
Sure.
Sure.
You could just run through them real quick.
Yeah.
They're just continuing to do concrete pours and, uh, dance floor and the stage are going to be the next two big things that they pour. So these are just interior spaces, there's a lot of storage spaces in this, uh, third phase of the project. This is the second floor of the historic building where we refurbished it and we just finished the floors out. So this will be a gallery space.
Questions, comments?
Be nice, first class.
It is nice, I hope y'all get to. It is nice. I hope y'all get to visit it whenever it's open.
I will.
Do we know when they plan to complete it?
They're working with exhibit directors right now. I think they're targeting for their gala, which is, I don't wanna misspeak, but sometime in the first quarter to make their unveiling of the wing, so.
Okay.
They'll have a few months to kind of get their stuff in and start setting up and doing all that too. And they have a lot of stuff in storage that they have relocated temporarily, that they gotta move back now and fill those archive rooms up.
Okay.
I'll be just in time for my staycation.
That's it?
When I get off the council, I'm gonna do a staycation.
That's it.
Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Five B.
Resolution number twenty-four, one twenty. A resolution awarding six and twelve month bids for supplies.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman Deedee Johnson-Reed, Councilman Marlon Lewis, any discussion on this item? Just our normal bids that we do every six months. Hearing none, please vote your machines. Thank you. Five F.
Resolution number twenty-four, one twenty-one. A resolution approving the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six capital outlay project priority list.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mayor President Ricky Gonsalas, I need a second.
Second.
Oh, Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, thank you. I have a list that I included and what we're doing, this goes to Richard Minville next week, so we wanted to start getting this together. I'll kind of go over the list if that's okay, and you'll see we're actually leveraging a lot of money this year. This is probably the biggest capital outlay ask we've had. First one up is roads, and we're asking for six million dollars. We can ask for six million dollars because we have seventeen point one million to spend on roads, so we're gonna take two million. We're gonna bid out thirteen million right now, and it took us two and a half years, almost three years, to spend twelve point five million. Probably two, two years. So we'll start with the thirteen million and pledge the two million, because why wouldn't we take two million dollars and turn it into six? So we would gain four million dollars by matching two million dollars. Now, if it doesn't work, we didn't lose the two million, you know, we didn't gamble it, we just said we would leverage it. So if it doesn't work and we don't get capital outlay, we'll just come right back and put it back in the pot and add to the projects that we're doing. But I think that it's wise at this early stage, when you know you have three years of roads coming, why not take some of that money and try to leverage it and turn it into more money? So that's the first one is roads. The second one is drainage. We're doing the same thing. We ended up with a grant that we didn't think we would get. We got a grant, that left more money in our drainage account, so we're taking a million dollars and trying to turn it into three million dollars. Do we have additional drainage projects besides the one million dollars we're spending? Oh, we got a bunch of. So our engineers has helped, have helped us to put together a package, and it's just a ton of chronic areas in town that we couldn't get to if we didn't, you know, find a way to elevate our total in our account. So this is a way to take one million and try to leverage it into three. If it doesn't work, our million goes right back in and we continue to work on drainage. The next one is the Dory property. Mr. Bill Dory donated the property on Hopkins Street, and he also donated a million dollars. And from the get-go said, I like the way you operate, I like the way that you leverage money, let's see what we can do. This is an economic development project. We take the million dollars, we're gonna turn it into three million or four million dollars. We have three there, but I kind of think, well, we're gonna get three. So if we get three, then we have four, all right? We have a project that is planned, I've got schematic designs to show the state, I've got budgets. So we would build three rental units. Well, first, we're gonna do two with an additional, but we can afford to do three. So we would do three rental units, we have a clinic that is gonna locate there. We are talking to a bank that would do an ATM, and we'll have two more tenant spaces. Once we fill those tenant spaces, then our job's done. We turn that property over to Hopkins Street Economic Development District. Now, that district, which is its own taxing body, gets the revenue. They take the revenue and they march down the street and continue to help businesses and continue to help, you know, the people inside the Hopkins Street Economic Development District. That's what it's set up for. So this is a kind of a creative way to give them funding and give them away, and I don't wanna be the city, you know, we don't wanna be a long-term landlord. When Mr. Dory came, he said, that's what I wanna do with it, leverage the money, you know, find a way to get it built and then turn it over. So that's what we're gonna do. So again, we're asking for three million and we're putting up a million. So that would give us enough money to complete the entire project and then turn it over. We are asking for, it's not a lot of money, but we need about a hundred thousand dollars for each restroom at, that's the only thing we have left at the gyms. We started with the most critical when I got here, and when many of you got here, and in this council's time as well. We've re-roofed both of the gyms, we've had to change every electrical panel, we've had to change every air conditioning, all the equipment, I mean, air handlers, everything. We've had to change the boiler, work on the boiler, we've had to paint them, we have redone lighting, we have done exterior painting. The only thing we have left are the two restrooms, the facilities at two, at both facilities. And the reason we waited on that, because it was the one thing that was still, they're not pretty, but they were functioning. So we said, okay, let's fix the things. You start with the roof, you start with the electric, because it was a fire hazard because we had Federal Pacific panels everywhere you can look. We, you know, the ACs either went out on us or were broken from the beginning, and we had to do small things, you know. We had a kitchen in the west end that had no stove. I mean, what was the point? We've had things at both gyms that just really were antiquated. So this is the last thing, so we're asking for two hundred thousand dollars. The next thing, we still have it on, it was Priority Five last year, that is the new, on Admiral Doyle, that would be the new swimming pool, and it would go on Admiral Doyle, and you would enter it from Admiral Doyle, and then you could also get to the back of, you know, to Bank Park from there. But it would have an Admiral Doyle entrance. It's designed already, we got the money to do that. It's set up that the high schools can use it and have tournaments, because we don't have anything like that here. The public would be able to use it, I mean, it would be multi-use as a swimming pool, and we've already talked to all the high schools and they would all, around the area, not just in town, and they would be willing to utilize it. So it is on the sheet again. The next one is something new, and I was gonna talk about it, it's the Sugarcane Festival Building. We don't have it yet, okay? The parish has taken the first step to donate the building to the city and the surrounding property, not all of it, some of the surrounding property around it. So it's a challenge, but we also see it as an opportunity. So we're putting in for capital outlay for something we don't own yet, because if it happens, things need to move and need to move quickly. You'll see another item a little later where I'm asking the city council, and that's where we'll have a big discussion about it, where I'm asking the city council to vote that if the parish, I'm gonna say when the parish says, we're offering it to you, that we could, I could accept it. At that point, we wouldn't be holding up, because, you know, time is critical, the building has some issues. We happen to think that we have the skill set to fix it. And it's an opportunity to take something that, you know, was built in nineteen fifty, it's a historic building. The first thing we do is put it on the National Register, the next thing we would do was the renovations that we can do. We have some matching money, we realize we have to get more. Once we spend money on it, then there's some tax, I mean, all I do in my private business is full with historic buildings for forty-something years. I have a little design firm and a construction company, so I got a lot of ways I'm useless. But in this case, I got the right skill set, okay? So one of the things we would do was apply for those tax credits that you can get, you can actually sell the tax credits, and then that money can go right back into the building. So we see it as a challenge, but we see it as an opportunity. So I included it in capital outlay this year, so that if it all works out, that we end up with it while capital outlay's going on, that and the next step we take tonight, we would be ready to receive money. And we need money. The last item that has been on every year that I've been the mayor, with the help of Councilman David Broussard, is the grade rail separation, which is the overpass. Well, cost of going up so much, you see, I mean, I was honest, I put undetermined at this time. I mean, we were talking that it would cost twenty-five million dollars, you know, when I got here, okay? Or when I was the pro tem, all right, which is, you know, ancient history. So, you know, if it's thirty million dollars, you know, go figure what thirty percent of thirty million dollars is. I mean, I don't know that we could afford that all at once, I don't think we could. We would do nothing else and still be short, but I wanted to honor it that it's been on the list since I got here. It's been on the list when it was previous mayor. I sure wasn't letting David Broussard leave his last year there, it wasn't on the list, okay? So do I think we're gonna get it? I don't. Do I think, you know, you can make a case that it's needed, but it's something that's so big, we would never be able to pay for that all at once and only the city of New Iberia? So, but it's on the list. So that's our capital outlay, and just a rough, you know, quick summary, and then now I'm gonna open it up, so we can talk about it.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Roads, drainage, we know that's critical.
Yes.
Those two things.
And it's infrastructure.
And it's infrastructure, and critical. Um, now, you said we're putting up a two million dollar match to get six million, right?
Yes.
So that'll be eight, eight million?
No, well, yes, we would have eight million more for roads, correct. Six of, these dollars are the dollars that we're requesting from the state.
Right, I understand.
Unless you add our matching. Yes, sir.
Right. I thought you said six earlier.
Yeah, I probably did, but that's the ask for them. Thank you for correcting me.
No, no, I didn't wanna do that.
Ain't no big, ain't no big deal.
All these things are critical to our whole community. Number three, the Dory Economic Development Project is also critical for that particular community. Restrooms, like you said, they were working, I hope we get it. The pool, center of town, I like the idea, definitely hope that happens. Sugarcane Festival, watching the news last night, I saw that they were promoting giving it to us last night. That's what the article basically said, or the article basically said, oh, this priority list, the governor or the government, state government, they can fund them all, right?
They could.
Or fund them, fund none, right?
They could. This is easy.
Or fund half.
Yes, sir.
Or the, or the, or the top two or three priorities, or they can fund one. What I'm asking is, is this priority list, is it normally that when you hand it over to the governor's office, they say, okay, well, we're gonna fund the cheapest, or we're gonna fund the more, the one that is top priority?
My second term as mayor is almost up, and then I had two terms as pro tem. So that's four cycles, you know, that's four years, so that's sixteen years of capital outlay. We tell them thank you and take whatever they feel. And the mindset of each administration is different. The mindset of each rep that changes or senator that changes is different. So different people involved in this process have different priorities or look at types of projects differently. There are some administrations that love quality of life projects, there are some that love recreation. There are some that say, I don't wanna fund that, I wanna fund infrastructure. There are some that are a combination of, well, at times, quality of life is economic development. And so it just depends on the mindset. So what I learned to do, didn't do it at first, I mean, it's a learning curve. We have a variety of projects that impact a variety of things, from infrastructure to different areas of our community, to different needs. I wanna send in as many as I can, and this is the first year that we have, just, you know, the grace of God, I guess, that we have money to match that these numbers are pretty big. So I'm sending it in, I will politic for all of them equally, I will meet with all the reps, I'll go to Baton Rouge, we'll do everything we do. And at the end of the day, whatever they tell me, I'm just gonna say thank you. That's kind of how it works. I don't think that it's, you know, and we'll just have to see. We have a new administration, we have new representatives, let's just see how it goes. But this gives us a broad spectrum of possible projects, and we're not fooling around. There's projects with matches, there's projects that, you know, we're ready to take on. If that answers your question.
Yeah, no, just, I've just got some thoughts, but I can't put them all in public, just, you know.
Okay, okay.
I know this administration is pro, pro-infrastructure, you know, but like I said, whatever we.
Yeah, yeah, and we put a lot of infrastructure, so, you know. We, we hopefully, of some of our reps and some of our, you know, associates that we work with, and we can't do it without our Baton Rouge delegation, I'm giving them what they ask for, so let's just see where it goes. You know, it's fun. I mean, it's all opportunity. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
So if the, if the current administration decides not to fund the Dory Economic Development Project, what would be the next step for us?
Well, for most of these, I'm always looking for a Plan B, okay? I mean, we bonded out the roads, you know, I put my desk on the sidewalk, everyone of you helped. We did whatever you had to do it the second time to get the tax, it wasn't really a new tax passed, okay? So that's Plan A. Plan B is add to it. Drainage, we have a huge retention pond we're putting together, we scraped up the money to do it, and then we found a grant for it. Now we're trying to do more drainage somewhere else, okay? So everything you try when you can to have a Plan B. On the Dory property, and actually, on the roads, the drainage, the Dory property, the Sugarcane Festival Building, that's the only ones I've found so far. We've met with Acadian Planning, we've talked to Delta Regional Authority, we're meeting with, let's see, there's another agency. We met with USDA, with a rep, a grant writer who writes for them. So my backup plan is all of these things, and once you have the legwork, once you have the plans, once you have a schematic design, once you have a budget, once you got a, you know, something that helps you sell it, a rendering or whatever, once you have all of that, you might as well send it everywhere. At the worst case, you'd have too much money. Well, whoever heard of that, okay? Government never has too much money. So we are sending these same packets of projects out to all these other groups, so that's my Plan B. I don't wanna sit on it, you know, and you'd ask specifically about Dory. I mean, Mr. Bill Dory walked in my office, says, I got this piece of property and here's a million dollars, go develop it. That's never gonna happen again, okay? So I don't wanna let him down, I don't want to do nothing or say, oh, we didn't get the capital outlay, you know, while I got a million dollars in the bank. So I'm gonna continue with all of these to leverage it in every direction I can. So any grant opportunity that Jane finds, anything that I find, I mean, Lain and I put together some grant, put it together quickly. We put together some really big grants, and then we turn them over to Jane to finish, okay? Which is probably not fair, but that's how it goes. I mean, she turned in a seven million dollar grant that we started and cranked out quickly. Then she had to work over the Fourth of July, she turned it in, and they're still talking to us. It's seven point something million dollars. We didn't get it yet. That's the one that would harden our existing trailers and would let us spend money on roads and sewer pumps and all kind of stuff around those areas. But we're not just laying on this and saying, well, capital outlay didn't give us any money.
Okay, and so then my next question is, if we, if you don't get the two point six million for the Sugarcane Festival Building and you don't have other monies committed from other groups yet, would you still accept this building from the parish?
I, my opinion, yes, I would. This is the way I look at it. It's in the middle of our park. We also get, and I'll kind of go over that, we get where the skate park is now, okay? We get the teardrop, because people don't realize the city doesn't own that. We get Devil's Pond, which we've just spent money on and drained, drained, dredged two years ago, did all kind of work on it. We get what's left of that baseball field behind the armory, they put a fence up and kind of took part of the field. So we get all of that, the Sugarcane Festival Building and the park, and it's in the middle of our park, it's in the middle of our town. Does it need work? Yes. Does it have some issues? A hundred percent. And I don't wanna scare anybody, okay? The cladding on the building is asbestos. It doesn't hurt a thing, okay? It's like every house on Indes, Allen, and Everett and all those little streets that have the little asbestos tile, okay? They're gonna be around long after we're dead. It's in that way, if you don't make it friable, there's absolutely nothing wrong with it, okay? But if you had to tear down that building, you know, it'd be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if it's not being invested in now, that's a stretch to say, okay, but now go spend three-quarter of a million or a million bucks and tear it down. So if it sits there, it's in the middle of our town, in the middle of our park. If it does nothing, it will only deteriorate. So I want it to protect our assets around it. We have some matching money built in this year's budget that you approved, so it's four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, okay? I didn't say it's a lot, but it's something. Do I think that if we pull off some of these other things, as I have, y'all have helped me, we have done, we've been really good at pulling things off and then using other money that was sitting there or that was a match for something or that we had, we have tons of money in our budget of our tax dollars for projects. If we get grants or we get other things, it frees some of that money up. That's why I come back to y'all, as I have many times, and say, okay, I got three hundred thousand dollars, I'd like to use it for this. So do I think it's a long-term commitment? I know it is. Do I think if we don't have all the money at once, we can do everything? No, we can't. It's sitting there in a condition that is not really usable, okay? So if we spend the four hundred and seventy, let's just say, worst case, because believe me, you don't think I don't stay up at night and think of all this? Worst-case scenario, we spend the four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars and we fix one of the fifty-ton air conditioners, although they're both working again, but we fixed one of them, and I know a guy that for free I can get a whole lot of air conditioning information out of, and he's sitting right next to you, okay? So we pick, we pick the worst one and we fix one of the units. Well, now we fixed a problem, we're back up and running. We have a couple of hundred thousand dollars left to address some other issues. Is it what I want to do? No, it's not. Do I like to see that our dance teams, that our balls and that our other functions that happen there aren't happening? You know, this was the eighty-first Sugarcane Festival Building, and that building's been in existence since nineteen fifty and was built for the Sugarcane Festival, and they didn't do anything there this year. They couldn't. So do I think that, you know, what is quality of life worth? Is it worth investing in? What is keeping those businesses here, that they spend tax dollars? You know, what is it that you, you know, your kids have to go, we gotta go out of town for too much already. So if you're sending your kids out of town for dance recitals and everything else, you might never get them back. I'm not saying they won't live here, but you know, they're gonna start, oh, well, we'll just go to Lafayette. So it, it's worth scrounging and worth making an investment. But do I think four hundred seventy thousand, seven thousand dollars is gonna do the deal? No, it's not. Do I realize we could struggle, and I will have to ask for more money, and I'll have to keep looking for grants? Oh, yeah, I do. You know, I mean, when you walk through hell, you act like you own it. I, I, I mean, you know, if you either take it on or you don't. And so my view is, you know, I, that's why I'm bringing it to you, but my view is, is that, uh, and I've talked, have I talked to the state? Yeah, I'd be crazy if I didn't talk to the state. I'm the one who's running out on a limb, okay? So did I talk to the state, and talk to our capital outlay, and talk to our consultants, say, do you think this is a good project? Did I bring the man who helps with the National Register and say, architect was Owen Southwell, it was built to look like a sugar mill, it's got some long history, can I get some, uh, a, a way that I can get some tax credits, I can sell? You know, I mean, I'm looking into every aspect of it, but, uh, I didn't say it's not gonna be a climb.
Okay, so, um, thank you, I appreciate that. Is there any way that when we're negotiating with the parish, because of course, they're gonna get this off their books, and they are going to, whatever money that was designated for this project is gonna be used for something else. Is there any way if we take this off their books, that they also give us money to go with it? Because, I mean, they've kinda let it fall into disrepair.
Well, I, it's kinda like, I know, but it's kinda like when I say that there were twenty-six mayors before me, and they all had, uh, priorities, and they didn't line up, or that we can't go back and say, oh, I'm gonna criticize that one because he did this or that. So I, I'm not looking backwards at the parish.
No, I'm not saying looking backwards, but my thing is, is that they, they really wanna hand it over to us, and we're, uh, opening our arms to say, okay, we're gonna take this and try and make it better for the community. We should put, make them put more skin in the game than just the, the broken-down building.
Well, I understand that, I don't know that that's gonna work, and, you know.
But we can ask, right?
I, I can ask anything, but do I know, you know, am I gonna take it? E- either we're gonna take it, or we're not going to. Do I mind asking? Ah, you know, I'll ask, I'm asking the state for, you wanna total this up, uh, you know, I'm asking the state for, twenty, twenty-seven million dollars, okay? So, you know, talking to them, you know, we have, we're not there yet, in other words, let them do. Their council needs to say, we're gonna give it and vote to send it our way. That's the first step. You're gonna give me, and really, we talking about it, and that's what we always do, we cheat, and we have something later, so we won't have to talk too much later, okay? But we talking about it now, 'cause it's an item later.
Right.
You're gonna give me the authority to negotiate and to accept it if they send it, and I gotta bring it back to you. Nothing, I don't do anything without y'all, I mean, we're a team. So, you know, I can ask, we can try, uh, I don't know if that's reasonable, I mean, you have people on the other end, and that's, that's the, you know, the compromise. You have people on the parish side that I am sure, and it's fine, saying, how much are they gonna pay us? I mean, you know, you end up that it becomes the, the standoff of, you know, we're asking them, a- as you say, you know, could you give me some money? They're on the other end, I have just as many, I'll bet, over there saying, you know, well, you should pay us.
Or they can keep their building and fix it.
Well.
So here's the thing, I, I get what you're saying.
But if they're not.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm just.
My community, our community suffers, and the bigger community suffers, if we get into a standoff, you know what I mean?
I understand what you're saying, however, if, if we don't get this capital outlay money, and maybe we will, um, but I'm just saying that our citizens are gonna have to pay with tax, are we gonna do this with taxpayer dollars? So my thing is, is that, you know, we gotta keep that in mind, that there's gonna be ongoing maintenance for this thing. When you're gone, and I'm gone, and all of these people on the council are gone. So we just need to make sure, um, that.
She's killing us all.
This is a really. My what?
I said, she's killing us all.
Hey, you know, I might as well keep doing what I've been doing for four years.
I've enjoyed every minute of it, keep going.
And again, I'm not against taking the building, please don't hear me saying that, because I can see that there could be some benefit to the city owning the building. However, I, I just, I'm looking at it from, uh, the taxpayers' perspective. We take the building, um, now we got ongoing maintenance. We don't have a guarantee, we have a commitment here, and so we're, we're actually gonna vote on this tonight, so I'm just, I wanna make sure that we're making.
I understand.
The right decision, considering we don't have any money committed right now. And if we, if we accept this building, we're taking on a lot of expense for our taxpayers and future administrations.
And you and I always get along, and I welcome, you know, what you give me. On the flip side, you know, we, we building a new park together on Ann Street.
That's right.
We don't have any money, I'm, I'm just saying.
We got money, we got capital outlay money.
We'll build it, but we don't have any, there's no revenue, and there'll be maintenance. And I'm not knocking it.
Agreed.
In other words, what you gotta look at is.
We got capital outlay.
You know, we got farming here for an issue later tonight, okay? The fire department, what they bring in, doesn't pay for everything. The police department tax that we passed to bring back a police department pays for a third of the department expenses. Parks and Rec, I love my Parks and Rec, it is so far away from not paying for itself, it's not, and I'm not being critical, okay? It doesn't, it is a service, and it is quality of life, and it's what keeps our citizens here. Uh, Public Works, you can go down the line, you know, and, and I'm not being, uh, flippant about this, and I'm not losing my business sense, 'cause I got business sense. None of our departments, you know, the, the permit office, you can think of every department. The only department that pays for itself is Section Eight, okay? Section Eight, a- and only 'cause we got a new person who added how many families, it's ridiculous. Okay, that department pays for itself. No other department, nothing in this city, it's all back to taxes, and we're just spreading it out. The, the challenge, I mean, is sitting these seats, all of them, 'cause all of us have that, is you're trying to decide, okay, I don't have enough money to do everything internally of each department, but I can take our tax dollars and make up the difference. So you make as intelligent choices as you can, and you pick where am I gonna spread the money out to balance out everything, and we do it.
I, I agree.
But that's the challenge, that's always the challenge.
I agree, however, this is in my mind, maybe just in my mind, this is slightly different, because this is owned by the parish. It is something that they're asking us to take off their hands, they have not kept up the maintenance, so we know, we kinda know what we're getting into, we're gonna get into something where we're gonna need a lot of money to fix it. So that's different to me than the quality of life of parks and all that stuff, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it.
I understand.
I'm just saying that in our negotiations with the parish, they oughta throw us some big bones.
Mayor.
Yes.
No, go ahead.
No, no, I'm calling for you, I'd like to hear your opinion, you keep me out of trouble.
Well, no, but.
He's just all out of trouble.
It's more than the building, I'm not disagreeing with what anybody's saying here, and we gotta get the right deal, there's no doubt about that, but people don't realize there's fifteen acres of land there, that starts at Parkview and goes all the way to the bayou. And it goes from the old Dorima subdivision to the old City Park property, but there's fifteen acres there that's owned by the parish. And we have rented that on a sweetheart deal forever, uh, but since nineteen thirty-five, that's parish property. Now, what they're talking about doing is transferring that property to us, which would include the Sugar Festival building. It wouldn't include the armory area, and it wouldn't include the Veterans Memorial area, and we probably have to work out some kinda swap.
Yeah, we're giving them.
Access.
Yeah, we're giving them a little piece in the front of the veterans where the jet is and where their parking is. In the swap, they will own that, because we own that. So we talked about, we'll give you a right-of-way, and then they said, well, wait a minute, we giving you property, it made perfect sense. I said, you know what, we'll just give you that.
Yeah, we got.
So they will own that.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's complicated, it's complicated, but.
Everything's complicated, anything good's complicated.
Well, we've done a lot of complicated stuff here, but, um, the, you know, you gotta realize, if you look at the aerial photograph, you know, that Sugar Festival building is part of the property, but it's a small part of the property. You know, most of that is area we've always assumed was city property, it's not, it's not. And, uh, so we're gonna get a lot of area to, uh, that we will own as our park property in addition to the building.
Who's next? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refrain my comments to the festival building till later on agenda, I think we got to Nodger and Rain for a minute there, but, you know, government, if you look at this adopted budget, we're not a for-profit company, you know? We're a service company, we gotta service the constituents, serve the taxpayers. So that's why, you know, you see the budget the way it's presented now. But on, on the capital outlay list, you know, I think if you look at it, it's a wish list. Are we gonna get everything? Probably not, more than likely not. Are we gonna get some of the key things? I feel very confident that our representation is gonna get us some of the key issues here. But if you look at the list, it, it, it represents everybody in this community. It touches everybody in the community, from roads to drainage, to the festival building, to, you know, Dore Economic, it touches everybody. So when I look at a list, and I wanna approve a list, I wanna make sure that I'm giving back to my community as a whole. And I think the, all these items do in some part, in some fashion, I think it's a good list, and I think it's worth the challenge.
Thank you. Councilman Ruzar.
Festival building is the highest place in Yarbury, I heard, highest place. Will we call it a civic center, will we get it developed? Will be, uh, will we, uh, will, will it be big enough when you, uh, develop this Sugar Cane Festival building?
Well, the first.
Big enough building?
First thing we gotta do is fix what we have. First thing we gotta do is get what we have usable, um, and, and I think that that's gonna go a long way. Is it something that events could be held there? Yeah, it is. Uh, will it always be named the Sugar Cane Festival Building? Yep, its original donation says the name can't change. Will the Festival Association always have it for a week and an office there? Yes, they will, 'cause that's why it was designed and built. So, you know, some things won't change. Uh, on the flip side, you know, do I plan on marketing it and promoting it diff, you know, once we get it repaired and up to speed? Uh, could there be some future things? Oh, you know they could, there's, there always could be. Again, that takes money, but once we have it operational, and hopefully a little more than that, um, well, we're gonna market it differently, and we're gonna, you know, take some time to get it out there, and try to promote, work with other groups, and really try to get it where it's rented more, and more events are held there. So that's kinda the, the phase, that's where I got the first step.
In the past, the government has been looking for evacuation spots. If it is a high spot in Yarbury, you know, you have to come through, you know.
Gym, and we are in the process of spending a half a million dollars on our gym to sprinkle it. I've got a bunch of firemen in the room, I'm not saying it because of that, you know, we used to have to do fire watch, 'cause we didn't have a sprinkler system, and it was our shelter when it really shouldn't be a cha- a shelter, but it's all we got, okay? It's all the parish has. So we will continue to use that building, and that building will be sprinkled. You know, if an emergency happened, and the city happened to own that building, could I do something with it too? Yeah, if I needed to, I sure could.
I needed just Yarbury Parish to keep coming.
I think the, uh, the gym works, and once we, uh, sprinkle that, you know, that'll be our, let's hope we don't get hit bad enough that, but I'll use this building if I got to, I mean, it doesn't, it, you know, that's our people.
Right.
But thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
It was mentioned tonight about marketing anything. And I think the city does a great job, and I think with this building, you can continue to do that job to get more events there. But losing a couple of dance, uh, teams that go up there, that couple already left, because it wasn't in, in shape enough for them. The taxes we lose on them going out to eat is unbelievable. Hundreds of kids, the parents, their grandparents go watch them dance, now they're going somewhere else. And after they leave, seeing their grandchildren, children, or dancing, they go get something to eat. Seventy-five percent get something to eat on the way home. We, we losing all of that. So I think at the end of the day, i- it's could be a liability, but it's gonna be another asset of bringing in people, renting and eating locally. It all, it, it all just works together. But as an empty building, it does nothing for us but lose people to go somewhere else to, and it's a unique building. I mean, to, to, to have events there that no one really has. I think we have something we can market, and, and the mayor's been good about doing those things, and it hasn't been done in the years past. And I think we might have the opportunity to make that happen, and I think it's gonna be an asset that, like you said, we probably won't appreciate till we, we off this council, but that's just how it is. I, I think it's a good idea if, if it works out, 'cause in a land, you can't put a price on land, it's there. You can't, I mean, there's so much opportunity we can do with that. So I, I think, like farmers, they don't wanna get rid of that land, and these people wanna give us land, let's take it.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my question is, on what list is that frontage road?
Frontage road is, frontage road is coming, we signed paperwork today, and we have done something unusual. Can't say I don't think I have the box, and you were with me, and, and many of you were. From the very beginning, we pushed for the frontage road, because the city owns twelve acres next to the Hampton, and if we got the frontage road and we got it connected, I could market that piece of property, and that's what we all talked about. And we own it, so if I got two big boxes to go there and rent it, they'd never pay property taxes, so we would have a really good incentive, and we'd make the cheap, the rent as cheap as Jeff Simon says I can, that I don't go to jail. And so we could probably attract a couple of big boxes there. So the frontage road has been important since I got here, and even before. So we just signed papers that the engineering's ready to start, and then what we started doing, which I think is weird, but you do what you gotta do, we would ask for money for the frontage road and capital outlay. Well, we all know, we're not fools, when they do I forty-nine, they need that frontage road, so we could've waited, but it might be ten years from now, and one of these days, somebody else would've paid for it. But what we did, we were eight hundred thousand dollars in the hole the first year, and we found another two hundred, made it a million bucks in the hole, and gave the two hundred thousand dollars as a match so we could keep the frontage road alive. Since then, we've gotten a few million dollars from the state, we put up a little bit of more money, we got MPO in Lafayette to put up one point five million, and matched the money that we've amassed from the state and our money. So we really think, we didn't ask for it this year, 'cause we think we have enough money to build the frontage road.
Okay.
So we just signed the engineering package with, I signed it today. And so now they'll, they finally selected engineer, 'cause they feel we have enough money. Uh, we have a meeting coming up on it, and then once the engineers are finished, then it can go out to bid. But that was something that was kinda cool, that I could take that off the list. Uh, so thank you for noticing and asking, I forgot about that, but that's why it's not on.
And Dan's right about after, eating after the recital. They don't have nowhere to eat. Nowhere to eat, can't find nowhere to eat after the recitals, you're right.
And after sitting through one, you need to go eat.
Well, I got a poor daughter, so I have to have a smile on my face.
Yeah.
And mayor.
All right, we'll sell food and pay for it. Next.
Back in the day, um, they used to have small concerts there.
Oh, yeah, they did.
You know, so.
Style shows, we did style shows.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
There were a lot of activities there that actually made some money.
Yep, agreed.
Yep.
And we can continue to do that.
Yep. Okay, any more discussion that turns to the Sugar Cane Festival that was capital outlay?
That was good.
Hey, I was just asking one question, I took it all over the place.
Thank you, thank you.
But it was on the list, though.
It was on the list, so we talked about it. All right, is there anything further on capital outlay? Then, we'll revisit Sugar Cane Festival in a little while, but I asked you to vote your machines. Thank y'all very much, good discussion. That's why we do what we do. Five G.
Resolution number twenty-four, one twenty-two, a resolution selecting American Rescue Plan Act One Block at a Time, one recipients.
I need a motion.
So moved.
And Pro Temp Ricky Goslin, and Councilwoman Brooke Marcock. All right, what you have in front of you, we have gotten over two hundred applications for One Block at a Time. Many, many of them unfortunately didn't, didn't, didn't make the cut. Either they didn't own it, or there was some reason, you know, they, they had an issue, or they made too much money. So it wa- wound down to eighty-three. And then in the last meeting, we went ahead and set some criteria, came up with a point system, never looked at a name of anybody, and still haven't, which I think is remarkable. And so, uh, kudos to Lainey, I mean, our clerk has worked tirelessly on this. So she helped grade her, and I think some of her staff helped grade all the papers, got it all together. And we selected, as we had talked about, so many for handicap ramps, so many for roofs, so many for the various things. She's weeded through all of that, so now the time comes that you approve this list. And then we have to send the heartbreak letters out to the people who didn't make the cut, and it's all poor people, okay? It's all people that legitimately have need.
Yes.
What we're doing with those applications that we couldn't fund, for whatever reason, we are sending them on to other agencies and trying to help those people, 'cause that's our community. We are picking the, uh, fifty-something that we can do, and we're picking about fifteen alternates. 'Cause the next thing that happens is, we hired David Arley, he looks at each one. There could be some houses we can't do. There could be some that for whatever reason, they don't have the requirements, once we look into it further. Um, if that happens, and we wanted to be able to go to our alternates, and the reason we have to do this is, we gotta lock all this money up this year. So having a list of who is going to participate, and alternates that could be slipped in, if one can't, that, that meets the requirement. We have two years to spend the money, and none of this is gonna happen overnight, but this gives us, locks this in, so that we don't have to send that money back. Um, so that's what we're doing tonight. Uh, the next other step is, we will have a public meeting at the Slimen with all of the people that are selected. We're gonna ask them to bring their ID, we're gonna have paperwork for them to sign, because then I really have them committed that, you know, they, they want this. And we'll be able to go over the rules and the timeframe, 'cause it's not gonna be quick. People are calling already, I mean, I, I know there's need, and we're doing something government's never done, but it's gonna be a process. So anyway, that's kind of an overview of, of what we're doing and this next step.
Does.
Yes, ma'am.
Does David have to, um, look at all of these before we send in the names, or with?
We're gonna send the names in, we're gonna meet with all the people, and they're gonna understand that you are.
Oh, I mean, like, for the reporting, for, for reporting purposes.
I think we're gonna be good for right now, 'cause we have those alternates. In other words, someone can drop off, you just won't be able to add anybody, but you can from the alternate list. I think we're gonna be good for right now, cuz we have those alternates. In other words, someone can drop off, you just won't be able to add anybody, but you can from the alternate list. And when we have the meeting, we're just gonna tell people that they're finalists. Because until he goes and looks at the ones and we know for sure, then, then the final selection's made. So, so this is our list of finalists.
Excellent.
I'm not trying to sound like The Bachelor, but you know, I mean, that's just how it is. It's, we couldn't think of any other way to do it. We're making this up as we go.
No, I, I mean, I think the rules that we put in place actually gave us a good list, and we're gonna help the neediest people in New Iberia.
Couldn't have done it without all the meetings we talked about.
Yes, sir.
All right, so you said there's eighty-three applicants that we approved?
There's, no, there's eighty-three that.
Qualified.
Were qualified.
Okay.
Of the eighty-three, we graded them all. Not all of them are going to be able to do something either.
Okay.
They go in the list with the ones that we'll have to say, we're trying to help you somewhere else. Fifty around.
Fifty-five account.
Fifty-five is approved.
Twenty-one alternates.
Yeah, we have twenty-something alternates.
Okay. All right, so fifty-five, for sure, they all, you know.
But if they're all good, then it's just fifty-five.
Right, that's right.
We have a fin- I mean, unfortunately, we have a finite amount of money.
And we do have, uh, we do have some contingency with the fifty-five, just in case we have cost overruns or whatever.
We do, we have some that we held out, especially because we're doing some rules.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Yep. And if we wouldn't need the contingency money, we'd only need some of it, I can, I can go to another alternate. You know, we're just trying to help as many people as we can.
All right, I'm done.
Good, thank you.
Do these people know that they're finalists already, or no?
No, and that's why we've never, I don't wanna, I don't want anybody to say poli- I, you know, politics is not my thing in some ways. So we didn't look at any names, we didn't look at anything, I still don't know who it is. So then, we're not gonna know till we meet him. And that's kinda how I want it. The letters will go out, and when I meet you at the Slimen, I'll, I'll, I'll know who got it.
Now, let me ask you this, speaking of politics.
Yeah.
Uh, did we consider this, how many did, how many from, per district? Did we consider that?
We, we, the one thing we did, we have, we made sure we had one per district.
Yeah, at least one.
Worry about it past that, but we made sure that we had one per district, cuz I didn't wanna leave any part of, I'm a mayor for the whole town, I don't wanna leave anybody out. That's a good question then.
And with this group of people, I mean, we're gonna send the people, the letters out to the people who actually aren't gonna get selected first. So they'll be notified, and then.
They're all gonna go out together, I think. Is that, is that right?
Okay, you're gonna put, okay, excellent.
Yeah, they're all going out tomorrow. We trying to, you know, cuz we need to end this. It, it's a good thing we're doing, it's very unusual, the government would do this, but I mean, the phones are ringing like crazy.
Oh, I'm sure.
When people have need and they see hope, you know?
Yeah.
So we wanna get all the letters out as quick as we can.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five H.
Resolution number twenty-four, one twenty-five, a resolution awarding contract to Byron's Cabinets and Woodworks for the remainder of the Slimen Theater new art displays project. And authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Dan Doll, I need a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, these are the stands that will be used for the Plan Air Festival that we now have taken over. Uh, and that's going well. We're getting applications in, my staff is handling it, it, it's gonna be a good thing, and we're, I'm excited that we kept that here and it didn't go to Lafayette. We'll also be able to use these stands for other things, because they're pretty light to move around, so if we wanna do something at another city building, we can. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, did we do a mo- oh, we already did the motion, I'm sorry. All right, any discussion? And please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Six A.
Ordinance, introduction of ordinance number twenty-two, four dash twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement with the downtown neighborhood association related to the Neighborhood Investments American Rescue Plan Act project. And setting for public hearing on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
I need a motion.
So moved.
Mayor Proton Ricky Gosselin?
Second.
Second. Councilwoman Deedra Bell, thank you. And, let's see, any discussion on this item?
So since I'm part of the organization, I'm gonna abstain.
Yes, ma'am, I kinda thought that. That's why you didn't jump out and second it.
Yeah. I'm looking at, Councilwoman Lewis, like, can you second?
Yeah.
Good thing for Councilwoman.
Well, I was kinda thinking the same thing.
Do what?
Well, no, cuz this part is just with us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. And this, uh, is, we have three neighborhood associations that were given a total of sixty thousand dollars, two of our ARPA money. And they will pick a project, uh, that's good for their association, and then we will handle the project. So this is the first one, and we have a couple of other ones, so. The second, we actually did the first one.
Little Brooklyn.
Little Brooklyn, right.
And the projects are coming before council, right, for us to review?
Yes.
Right.
Yep. Anybody else?
The projects, are they decided on already, or no? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, uh, Little Brooklyn is sidewalks.
Okay.
So they are doing sidewalks, a little walking trail around the park. This one is.
We're gonna be, um, fixing, uh, one of the community's buildings, um, in the, in the downtown community. And we're going to, um, create a computer lab so that the people in the area who most of don't have wifi and, at home, they will be able to come in and use that.
Okay, cool.
Inside that building. Thank you.
Cool. Any other questions or comments? And please vote your machines. All right, six B, new subject.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two, four, uh, twenty-six. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of the sugarcane festival building and certain surrounding immovable property in this New Iberia City Park. And further authorizing the mayor to execute any agreements necessary to carry out the intent and purposes of this ordinance. All contingent upon Iberia Parish government action, authorizing the transfer of said property and setting for public hearing on October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Marilyn Lewis, Mayor Proton Ricky Gosselin, and, uh, any discussion?
Yes, actually, I did not say anything last time because, you know, that wasn't what we were supposed to be talking about.
What? Okay.
It's on the list.
I actually followed the rules for once, okay?
No, no, it's not on the list.
Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt? Proceed.
Yeah, you guys, you guys are all talked out, so we're good.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it's a good idea. Someone has to take over this building. Like, you cannot just sit there and fall apart, uh, cuz that is what's gonna happen, it sounds like, because the parish is completely done with it. So, um, Ms. Dee, I love your idea where they give it to us with money, that would be lovely. They're not gonna do that, but it would be great if they did. I mean, of course, the city would accept.
Strange things that happen.
You're right, so.
You have to negotiate.
That's good. Maybe, maybe the positive thought, it'll really happen. We'll see. But, um, I recall dancing there, actually, whenever I was in dance school, and it was really nice, and it's right, you do go, and you have dinner right after, which is great. So, I mean, it's something that brings a lot of taxes and revenue to the city. Um, I did not know that the parish owned this until I got on the city council four years ago. I thought it was a city building. I was like, wait, no, it's not, that's weird. So I think it makes sense that we take it over. And, uh, the mayor always has a good idea as to how to make things work. Um, I think he's gonna do great with getting it revamped to where it's usable again. Um, and of course, we'll just have to pinch pennies and do the best we can to make it operate. Um, but I think it's good. I think it's good for the city, for us to keep it going. And that's it. That's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Councilman Bruce R.
Honor the Plax was my grandpa. And, uh, heard, uh, I hope it's a fact, that, uh, some ladies cornered him in nineteen-hundred. To come down and send some people from Washington DC to design that park completely. So a bunch of them from Washington DC came down, and, uh, he put some funds up too, but they came to design that big park like it is. So it was kinda substantial at that time, you know, way back, such a big area was saved as a park. So I think it was just fine.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I feel the need to say this, even though I don't usually say stuff like this, but, um. I asked a question I thought was legitimate. I asked whether or not you could, you would accept the building if we don't get the capital outlay money. Now, the discussion went further. I'm sorry the rest of y'all felt like it was the wrong time, but I didn't take it there. I asked one question. Um, second thing is, um.
After four ye- after almost four years, you, you worried about it now?
No, you know I'm not. I mean, because I'm gonna ask the questions I think need to be asked regardless of what anybody thinks.
We know that, that's all good.
But the other thing I, and here's the thing, the reason why I'm questioning this, just because, I'm not saying that the city shouldn't do it, cuz I'm, I'm actually in agreement. I mean, I'm fi- I'm for it. I'm not against taking the building. However, um, when it's all said and done, we act like we have no power, because this is a building that's owned by the parish. As citizens, we could require the parish to fix the building if we all got together and forced the issue. So my thing is, is that, uh, just because you guys think you have no power, and people, we do have power. So my thing is, is that, uh, just like they call us and they, you know, people call and say, I want you to vote a certain way on certain things, we can do that with the parish. But if, as the city, we're gonna take this on, and I'm, uh, like I said, I am definitely okay with us taking this on. I just wanna make sure it doesn't become a burden for the citizens in the future. Because the parish let it go, I don't want this to be something where then the city does the same thing after a few years. We just need to be careful about this, that's all. So I just want you guys to know, I'm not, I'm not against this at all.
Thank you. Well said.
I know y'all like to mess with me.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
So, I'm gonna be a, a little bit of a devil's advocate, because, uh, you know, what are we taking now? It should never got to this point. That building should not be in the condition it's in now. I mean, the wherewithal and the leadership of what's passing it down is duplicable. I think the building is in terrible shape and it's all because it wasn't paid attention to, and they didn't have the wherewithal to support the industry and the community that sits inside our city limits. I think the building, from a city perspective, without any risk, you don't get any rewards. Is it a risk? Absolutely. Everything we do appears a risk. But are the rewards great? The rewards are tremendous on something like this. It's gonna take long term to get it, and we got a big wish list. But to let it sit there and be dilapidated and to continue on the path we're on now is unacceptable for our community. And for the industry that sponsored the building and the city council's elected officials. We have to do something. This is the right step in the right direction. And we need to work hard together to get, make sure all the dots and Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, so that we can make it happen. And I think we can do it, and we will do it, and I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about the opportunities a lot of the hits, but I'm very full force note that there is a risk with this. There is a risk with this acquisition, and we need to be very careful what we step on, but I'm, I'm gonna support this already tonight.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, I wasn't gonna go there, but I'm gonna fix this first. Ms. Leibert, if I'm not mistaken, under robber rule of order and.
Uh-oh.
You, you, if a, if a comment is mentioned, you can speak on it, the conversation just went. So it was proper to talk about it during that time, cuz it was on the. It was on the agenda. It's kinda like if they call your name, you can answer them, right?
Yeah.
As according to the robber rule of, no, I just wanted to.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I served the board president for a couple of organizations, I had to learn that, but. Now, Ricky, I'm just gonna go back and do a little something else. That building been there for fifty years. You can't blame one administration on the dilapidation of it.
Right.
Well, I guess.
And, and, and not to mention, I'm just being honest, and not to mention, I, I love sugarcane. My family, believe it or not, Lyndon Lewis had three hundred acres of sugarcane. Eddie Lewis, grandpa first cousin, Charles Guidry, grandpa nephew, so we love sugarcane. But it's more about that building than it is, and the condition of it is, and we, you can't leave that building like it is. And if we just save you out of town, then we need to take the building. That's what I'm looking at. I like the risk of. You said something to that. Freddie, actually, being a builder, has done a great job, Stambor Pavilion, and all of those other things that. And, and I forgot how you said, Freddie, you like to take, repurpose stuff and, and all that kinda stuff. And I have faith, I really do have faith in Freddie's vision for that building. That's, that's why I'm, maybe, maybe if it wasn't Freddie as mayor, who is a builder. Who knows about it as best as who knows about all of this stuff that he need to know about. I don't know. That's why I'm willing to vote on the risk, cuz. And, man, I'm off the council, and I ain't running for nothing, but the leadership has proven to me that he can build some stuff in this, in this community, stuff that we need. But, uh, I ain't worrying about, cuz you go to blaming who did it, you gotta go back to all of these males up in this wall, and all them parish presidents on the other wall. So we ain't gonna do that.
And the building is seventy-four years old.
Right.
So, you know. Anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Anybody else? I think we good? Good?
Mm-hmm, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Then, uh, please vote your machines.
See, yes, both.
Thank you very much. I knew, I knew she was, I knew she was really.
Again, I'm not against it. I just wanna make sure we, we're not gonna do the same thing the parish has done.
Yeah, it's just fine. All right, uh, seven A.
Council. Public hearing action on the state of buildings located at one oh seven slash one eleven Buena Vista Drive, District One.
Okay, let's get the mo- motion, please.
Motion.
Get that out the way. Councilman Deedra Johnson Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt. Well, it seems like when we talk on these, uh, we end up not doing a motion, or forget it. All right, Matt, tell us the story.
What we have is one oh seven, one eleven Buena Vista, which is from the first batch of our demo list.
Yeah.
Uh, this one made it. It's, it squeezed in for the, uh, notice. Uh, we have to postpone the others, so this has been an eyesore for a while. It's been vacant, got vagrants in and out.
Who's cutting the grass? Cuz the grass looks like it's well maintained.
That was this morning, yeah, yeah.
So, do they know that we're gonna tear this down?
Yes, he called me, uh, earlier in the week, or last week, for a fact.
Okay.
And he does not, he, he obviously doesn't want it to be torn down.
Right.
Uh, his suggestion was to, which I can present to you, cuz I don't, I don't guess he made it tonight. He would like to demolish the upper half and leave the chassis on site for future.
We can't.
Non-informous use.
Yeah, we can't do that.
That's, that was his idea, uh, his suggestion.
Have we verified that he is not here, the owner of the property? I guess not. I was really hoping that he would come and, um, you know, we can come to some sort of resolution. Uh, cuz I don't like tearing down property. You know, that's definitely not something I like to do. I rarely have to do it in District One. Um, but this is something, I started getting complaints about three years ago, unfortunately. And so it's only gotten worse since then. Um, the door is normally open, the front door, the window is broken. Uh, and the problem is that it's just not secure with the people going in and out. Uh, it, it worries the, the residents nearby. So, um, I don't know, I was hoping he'd fix it up, do something with it, move it maybe, um, to wherever he lives. Because it's just sitting there vacant. It has been for, I don't even know how long. Like I said, at least three years I've been getting the complaints, so.
So, Councilwoman, uh, Marquardt?
Yes.
I see there's a, it looks like a, a brick home next to it. Is this not like, um, um, a restricted neighborhood or anything like that? There's no, like, HOA or anything in that area?
No, no.
Okay.
There's no HOA, and, um, apparently that is legally placed on some family property.
So he could move that, or, uh, once it's torn down, he could put another one in six months.
Right. Yeah, six months, I think.
Yeah.
On nine months.
Well, we gotta talk about, we need to, a year.
Talk about that, dude.
Need a year.
You asked about doing it on the next.
That discussion's coming in the next meeting.
Right, yeah.
It's already on our list.
Totally.
So, yeah, currently, six months would be what he would have to, to move it, but I don't know, I have not spoken with him. Um, I, I've just spoken to Matt, and that's all I have to go off of. But it cannot be halfway torn down, in my opinion. It's either completely redo it, uh, make it livable again soon, or, um, tear it down. Is, and he's not willing to tear it down or redo it?
He mentioned not putting any money into it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, he, he, it's not too far gone where he could put enough money into it and, and, you know.
Restore it, yeah.
He can restore, it looks.
I think so. But it's rotting, as it is. All the windows out, it's got a roof leak, the floor's got holes in it, so it's.
Probably soft.
Yeah, it's, it's got some deterioration happening, so.
And, and that resident lives not in New Iberia, correct?
Same, on the ground.
Okay, okay. Oh, it'd be really good if you could just move that to wherever he lives.
Right next to wherever he sleeps.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah. I, I'm gonna vote to demolish it, um, since he's not here and, just going off of the conversation you had, that he's not putting money into it, it shouldn't stay there.
Yes, sir.
I think what we should do is, if that's what you wanna do, is to say, he has thirty days to do it, and if he doesn't do it, then we do it.
Correct, correct. Okay, so.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we got a motion on the second floor, and I have a second. So motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marquardt, and second by Mayor Proton Ricky Gosselin. Is any discussion on the motion?
Man, the only discussion I have is reminder. I mean, he gonna pay for it one way or the other. He gonna either pay the city for it.
Yes.
Or he can hire somebody to, on itself, it's gonna be cheaper.
And it's cheaper if he does.
And it's cheaper if he does. He doesn't do it, then we step in and do it.
Couldn't he have put it on our other list? To be done, I mean, if, if he doesn't care, I mean, couldn't we have put it on the other list so it's like one that we tear down for free? To be done, I mean, if, if he doesn't care, I mean, couldn't we have put it on the other list so it's like one that we tear down for free? Instead of costing, charging him for this? Huh?
Instead of costing anybody.
Right.
Do you think he'd be willing to do that?
Possibility.
Just a thought, I mean, we, we are still taking.
And I don't know when that'll happen. In other words, the first half a million dollars that we got as a grant to do all the demos, we still haven't gotten the money yet.
Right.
The second one, which is four hundred and fifty thousand that we put up of ARPA money, we don't, we, I was gonna announce that in my announcements. We're not, we're not getting a lot of takers. I don't know when that program's gonna, gonna launch, so I just.
This might be one.
No, it could be, but, but Councilwoman Marquette just needs to know that it's, if we do that, it's gonna sit there longer. And you, you know, it's your district, so I'm letting, you know.
Right, right.
You should have the say. So it could be there that it sits there for, you know, a while.
Well, we have to have the names of, of the, the, or the addresses of the places we're gonna tear down by the end of this year for that as well, right? So, I mean, it's not gonna sit, depending, I guess it depends on when the project starts.
Correct, cause I have two years to spend the month.
Right. But she could, you could move it up to the top of the list. No, I might have one.
Been there untouched for at least three years that I'm aware of.
Just trying to save the taxpayers some money, I mean.
Yeah. It may be cheaper for him to haul it to wherever he lives.
Yeah, well, it might.
Technically be cheaper, we put him on that other list.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is actually two things, because it's the mobile home that's assessed in a name and then there's his property. So we would need both if we're gonna do the grant program. We need an agreement by both owners and I don't know where the mobile homeowner is.
St. Martinville.
Yeah, it's, it's, but it's, um.
Who's the property owner? I mean, where's the property owner?
Shelley Norris, Carob John Dortes, that's the address. So I think he just got the bill sent to his house, but I don't know. I mean, if you, if you ran that title to the mobile home, I don't know who would own it.
Just a thought, I mean, obviously Ms. Marquette can make whatever recommendations, we'll follow her lead. But I just was thinking, we could save him some money, cause we were still taking applications for people to have their houses torn down.
That is a good point.
Might be another six, seven months.
Well, and I'm thinking too, how long would it be before the city would get to it if he doesn't get to it, you know? Would it be around the same time?
Trailers are pretty quick.
Just a thought, I mean, your call, obviously.
Perhaps within thirty days, we will hear from him and like, we can get a different resolution.
You can, you have a resi, you do it, it's your district.
Right.
You know, personally, I always, and, and most of us do, we honor what you want for your district. So you got a choice. You can proceed with this and you got thirty days. You can come to the next meeting and undo anything you do, okay? If the guy would, would respond, would say, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. You can either let it ride and at thirty days, if they don't do it, you can tear it down. Or you come to the next meeting and say, you know, wanna bring the issue back up. I mean, anything we do, we can undo.
Yeah, and, um.
Cause we have the other option.
Yeah, you have the other option, but, you know, to make a decision tonight and to tell the guy, if you don't tear it down at your expense, we're gonna tear it down at your expense, at your higher expense. You know, maybe that is more encouragement than letting it sit there on some, on some list. So I would think that you'd go ahead and act tonight and then if he does the right thing, that's great. You know, but, uh, if he doesn't, then at least we got the wheels in motion.
Yeah, it's motivation.
Well, would we even offer him this option?
Does, do you know if he watches the council meetings? Like, I, I just have no clue, cause he has not reached out to me, but I, and I was really hoping he'd be here. It's complicated whenever the homeowner knows what's happening, but still doesn't show up.
Agreed. Again, I was just, I thought it would be a great way to save some money for the person, but we can do whatever you want.
Well, let's proceed with, um, giving him thirty days to, uh, to demolish it himself. If he doesn't, we will, if we hear from him, please let me know ASAP so we can figure out what we're gonna do at the next meeting.
Sure. Okay, any more discussion? Cause we have a, a motion and a second, is there any, anything else?
But if nothing changes, we move ahead.
Yes.
So just a comment. So Brooke, just, just, how many years they haven't done anything to that trailer? So you, I mean, thirty days.
Aware of, there's three years.
Yeah, so thirty days, you probably not gonna do anything moving forward, but we give him the option, I, I can support that.
Yeah, maybe you'll have a change of heart.
But we're not doing a second hearing, so I think tonight we're deciding, if it's not torn down in thirty days or he doesn't come up with a plan, then we're going ahead.
Correct.
Okay, any more discussion?
So basically after thirty days, it's in, it's in Matt's hands, it won't come back here. Okay.
Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much, seven B.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Attending to houses, I got a lot of calls about emergency. We never heard of an emergency till the last month or two. And people never heard of that. Emergency is shaking them up, we have an emergency on Elm Street. We have an emergency. We've been waiting for that lady to move out. She finally moved out a year ago. I know, Mr. Lawyer. Yeah, I think, I think I got the word that you're waiting on some, uh, kid, kin.
Well, I, I'd be happy to talk about this after the meeting.
But we said that three or four times. We had meetings here.
That's not on the agenda.
But, uh, we need something to happen on Elm Street desperately, cause I'm getting too many calls.
Alright, let's take that up.
And man, I hope something's happening, because I'm here and they having trouble with some kids of some parents that died. That, how in the hell you gonna chase three or four kids down, you know, after all this? So I'm just getting heat.
Alright.
From a lot of neighbors on this.
Alright.
I need an answer.
Yeah.
And if the government, I hear it's on the government this, if they don't do anything, what options we have?
Okay.
You know, something's gotta go.
Alright.
Cause we've been looking at that way too long.
Alright, let's, let's hit that one another day.
But I hope.
You made your point.
I hope some, something's going around in circles.
Okay.
Or not here.
Got it, thank you, Mr. B. So where are we?
Seven B.
B. What I thought. Seven B, Madam Clerk.
Resolution number twenty-four, one twenty-four, a resolution postponing the date of the public hearing for the attached list of buildings in a dilapidated and dangerous condition.
I need a motion.
So move.
Representative Goslin, Councilwoman Dee Johnson Reed, yes, sir.
This is my fault.
Yeah, it's nobody's fault.
Because I sat here at the last meeting when y'all set these things for hearing tonight and we just didn't have enough notice to give to these people to make it legal for tonight, because you got, last, last I heard about one of these guys, they were arresting him. And then one we think is dead, um, based on the obituaries, then we got some, some people who can't be found. So we have to use the appointed attorney process and we need to put this off for a month. So, um, we're just delaying these three and I think those are the only ones we have in the pipeline right now. So we need a motion to delay that until November sixth, which is a Wednesday after Election Day, because we have a postponed meeting.
I'll make that motion to delay it.
Yeah, we, we, we had a motion and a second already, so.
Oh, we did, could delay, okay.
So is there any other discussion?
That's it.
Then, uh, please vote your machines.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no objection, before I do Councilman's remarks, I'd like to move nine A up a couple of little things. Either that or we could postpone and send all these people home. It's a joke, okay? So let's move up, if you don't mind, the, uh, the nine A. Any objections to doing that?
Mayor, you say nine A.
Yeah, the announcement for public.
It's just an announcement for a public hearing, right?
Correct.
But you wanna move it up as a discussion item?
You know, it's just all, from, from council remarks down, it's all announcements. Yeah, yeah, so, and we have to read it legally, so I'd like to do that now.
So we, are we amending the agenda?
No, I don't have to, because normally, I, I'm, I'm, from Councilman's remarks and announcements, I kinda, you know.
Okay, I just.
Kinda my part, but I just would like to move them up a little bit.
Yeah, cause we saw all them firefighters and it was like, what, what they had on the agenda? Okay.
I know, okay. Madam Clerk?
Announcement of public meeting, notices hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Wednesday, November sixth, twenty twenty-four, at five thirty PM at its regular meeting place, the City Hall Council Chambers, four fifty-seven East Main Street, New Iberia, Louisiana. The City Council of the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in the City of New Iberia, State of Louisiana, to authorize the levy of a sales and use tax therein.
Great, and at this time, I'd like to call just somebody who wants to come up from the fire department. Just so our public knows, you know, they can explain it better than we can.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Zachary Ball, captain with the New Iberia Fire Department, and I serve as the president of the New Iberia Firefighters Association. Here today representing members of our department to speak about some serious issues we're having. There's been no increase in the starting pay for firefighters since the year of two thousand and three. The last year and a half, we've lost over a dozen members, majority of them to other local fire departments with higher salaries. Filling tho, filling those positions has been a major struggle. Working with minimum staffing and some days even having to temporarily shut down stations is not only dangerous for firefighters on duty, but also for the people with homes and businesses in the city. With other depart, other departments in the area offering competitive pay, we feel it's time for New Iberia to step it up and offer an actual living wage so we can hire and retain employees to serve this community. After several meetings with the fire chief and the mayor, looking at budgets, we found that there's no other way to provide a solution to this problem without proposing a new tax. This will allow us to give an increase to base pay of firefighters and relieve shortfalls of other departmental, departmental budgets so that we're not back here in a few years with the worst financial problem. Without second thought, the New Iberia Fire Department has always been here to help the people of this beautiful city. These men and women who put their lives on the line every day, ask for your support in helping us get this tax on the ballot for March of twenty twenty-five. Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it. Any questions or comments or?
Well, they got my support one hundred percent. Uh, my Aunt Peggy, if I'm not mistaken, Dan was on the council in two thousand and three, she fought for fire.
I was there too.
Department.
Yeah, you were there too.
I'm gonna tell y'all, just straight up, my Aunt Peggy walked me through the fire department, some of y'all were there. And she said, my nephew's running for city council and I'm gonna make sure he fight for y'all, cause I fought for y'all, some of y'all remember. And I'm gonna fight for this fire department, you can count me to help out in twenty twenty-five, I won't be on the council. But, uh, man, we can't lose, you know, we, you saw, we saw what happened when we lost our police department, you know? And I'm sure we're not gonna lose, you know, the fire department, but we wanna be able to hire quality people, you know? We always talking about Youngsville, Broussard and other communities, but man, our first responders is what really make us shine. So, you know, y'all can count me in, I'm gonna say that first.
Mayor.
So, um, unfortunately.
Oh, one more thing.
Go ahead.
It's going to the voters too, right? We make sure it gets to voters and we make sure they vote.
So unfortunately, you know, as an elected official, you, you, you faced with making tough decisions. And, and if anybody follows my past record as a councilman or, or on a parish, when you say taxes, I pay attention. I pay attention. I got one call from Mr. Ball. How many firefighters in this room? Ask me, what would I do? What was my comment? I said, I will never pass a tax on the people without their voice. That's what I said, right?
Correct.
That's what I said. Well, that got turned around, because your chief told people that I was not supporting the tax. Invalid. I would never, ever not support a tax for the people to support the fire department. You know what number the one reason is as public, as an elected official? Support public safety, protect your citizens. That takes funding, that takes financing. I'm not, I'm not no dummy, I know what it takes to protect the city. But when you don't get the right information and you don't call and ask for the information, watch when I press the button. Look at the screen, what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna support it, because I believe in each and every one of y'all. And that's how I feel about it. Same thing with the police department. And when we go to the voting booth, voting booth, I'm gonna support it again, I'm gonna pay more taxes. Cause I wanna support your salaries. It costs to live in this community and you put your life on the line. So next time we have an issue that comes up on the agenda about taxes, I want each and every one of y'all to call me personally and ask me, what are you gonna do, Mr. Goslin? Cause you gonna hear the same thing. I will support you. Send it to the people, let them make the decision. End of story.
Yes, ma'am.
So as a new councilwoman, um, I wasn't aware of the starting salary for the firefighters, but, um, former councilwoman Peggy Girak called me and told me, um, that you guys were, you know, on the lower end of the scale. So, um, I called the chief and we talked about it, I asked him how many people he had lost in the last few years. He gave me all the stats and I told him, I fully support you guys getting a living wage, because it is so unfair that you all don't get paid enough money to take care of your families when you put your life on the line every day for us. So thank you for what you do every day and if there's anything I can do to help support your efforts to get pay raises, I'm there. Unfortunately, I'm gonna be leaving the council, but I will definitely put the word out to my people to vote yes, to give you guys more money, because we should take care of our first responders and we should make sure that they can actually take care of their families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, as was mentioned earlier, I was here when they came up to the council to pass a tax to help their salaries and benefits. And that's what we're here for. I'll always support to bring something to the people. I don't think something as important as this, seven of us should make that decision. But one thing this does do for the community, not only make it safer, it makes your taxes go down, I mean, your insurance. If they're rating, they don't have the information, they don't have the equipment, we go through that every few years. They don't have the fire truck. Then our ratings go down and our insurance goes up. So this is a win-win for everybody. I, I really, I really believe that and, um, I never had, I've been here with twenty-something years. I never heard one bad thing about our fire department, uh, honestly. They, they do stuff more than just put out fires. That's what people don't understand. They there for everything, for events, for, for everything. And, um, you know, it only takes one accident to, to make somebody's whole life turn upside down. And to know that they there, I'm telling you, I, I, you know, it's just, it's, it's amazing. And what they need to go through and what they need to do and what they get paid. I, I applaud them, I mean, I, I always say that, you know, we, they do get the cost of living, but sometimes the cost of living, they get one and a half, two percent, the cost of living's three percent. So I, I think it's deserving, but what, what, what makes it right, these people could go out there and sell themselves. You know, we gotta help, but when people get involved with something they weren't, look, man, I'm always gonna be honest. And I appreciate them. I did get a call and, um, it was easy for me to say yes, cause you know what? The people are gonna speak after this. And, and I believe with the police department, fire department, the community just feels better when they better. I, I, I could be wrong, but people are just, we, we lucky. For this little town, we're lucky to have the services we have. And, uh, until you, I had somebody today, I'm, I'm not gonna say their name, of course, and I heard about it, I said, yeah. And I told him, I said, what do you know? Did you ever need them? Your house ever burn? Takes one house to burn and that, them not being there at the right time. Until you have that happen, you can't really appreciate the, the, what they do, you know? And, and I applaud them trying at this time to come out to try to sell themselves to get this increase. And, um, I applaud them for doing it, you know? Thank y'all.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I did meet with a couple of council, I mean, uh, firefighters at the Unity Community Picnic. They were there, um, showing people the fire truck and all, and they even had a second shift. And I walked up to them and I told them, I said, I'm, I supported one hundred percent. And then somebody did call me, I told them the same thing. And I honestly think that the citizens of New Iberia will also support it. If the citizens of New Iberia can support a tax for the sheriff department, which doesn't do as much as you all do for the city, I think, you know, that would be beneath them to not support you in a city here in New Iberia. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Broussard.
Four months ago, Mr. Mayor, maybe five months, you come tap me on the shoulder, right here, at the city council meeting. You got four fire trucks at your house, David.
Yep.
Get your butt home.
Yep.
You know, four fire trucks in my neighborhood, couldn't even get through them. So any neighbor wanna call me up and say, well, I'm gonna vote for a fireman to have their raise? They can call me up, but they better leave that phone alone. You know? And darn it, that's the biggest thing we have, Mr. Mayor, is, uh, the Police Department, which, and the Fire Department, every time you look around, they're always there helping. So, uh, we gonna need the firemen. And, um, yeah, I'll support you. Y'all were there in my house. And really, uh, the captains and all that were very concerned about what happened. You know, we gotta fix, our biggest threat was my insurance company. No, 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 no. In five months, and we finally got it all done. But yes, y'all have my full support. Mr. Mayor, we have to worry about it, we have a, a road going through our neighborhood at their houses in the parish. And we re, re, re-blacktopped the, 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 the road going in front of their house, but in the parish. But if the house burns down, guess who's gonna be the one to put it out? Our city Fire Department. But they have to come in our city if they can pay their taxes.
Yes, sir.
That's another thing we know. But yes, uh, I got emotional, yeah, like the loss of whole house. Thank y'all, firemen, for everything y'all do. And let anybody call me up. I'll tell them on that phone right there why. They saw what it was. I mean, y'all had that neighborhood all blocked up and three ambulance. Everybody was there. We had a good party. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are you skipping me?
Yeah.
Oh, why are you skipping me?
I'm not.
Oh, I just asked, are you skipping me? You said, yeah.
I know, I was gonna call on you.
Yeah, sidebar going on.
Um, I'd like to piggyback off of Mr. Broussard, um, you know, don't call me, ask me not to support firefighters. Uh, these are first responders, thank you all for doing what you guys do. Your job is so important, I know y'all know that, and maybe the public doesn't see it until they see it. Um, it's just so differently, like what Mr. Broussard said, whenever you pull up to your house, you know, and you have all these firefighters, and it, it's a big deal. Um, I've met a lot of you before, uh, usually on scenes around my neighbor's house, thankfully not on my house yet, uh, knock on wood. But you guys do a great job. Y'all are so quick, y'all are so kind, too. I've never heard anybody say anything bad about the Fire Department, like Mr. Dan said. You guys are very professional, you guys deserve a working wage, uh, it needs to be livable. So I'm glad that we're bringing this to the public. I really hope that they see it the same way we all see it, that they will support you guys. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Yes, real quick.
That's fine.
He, he touched me, uh, Mayor, uh, I had a house fire in nineteen ninety-nine. Personal, lost everything. And then in two thousand and six or seven, I had another house fire, and, um, Ron, Ronnie, the chief at the time. Ronnie and, um, the assistant chief, buddy, buddy?
Yeah.
Assistant.
Yeah, Ministry.
They called, because I just got involved with government a little bit, chatting my aunt, and they called me and told me my building was on fire, the barber shop. Right now, and I, and I said, I'll never forget telling him, man, don't let him look at my building. He said, we got you, Marlo. So it's personal to me. It's personal to me, it's personal to you. I had two house fires. Then I had dear friends who helped me establish what I have, David Lewis, Edward Davis, Tish, y'all know him by Tish? And of course, my friend, uh, Mr. Simon, Joe Simon, and just so many people interested in me that, look. I think the biggest thing isn't that, I want to say, because the public watched this, the public don't realize that y'all was getting underpaid for all y'all do. And like you said, they do more than just fires. Y'all put out fires that don't have smoke. Now, that's a T-shirt, y'all can have, y'all put out. Put out fires that don't have smoke. So vote.
There you go.
Thank you, and look, the economics of it, it's simple. You, you know, I'll name them, I don't care, you know, other communities, surrounding communities, Youngsville, Broussard, Lafayette, they pay more. You know, so we're losing people. We went through this with the Police Department, after we established the department, we did one round of raises. We had to come back and do more. I, I knew the firemen were coming, and I knew we would have to do this. Uh, you look, it's not a secret, they've already filed something publicly, uh, the parish is gonna go out for a tax increase. Uh, they'll actually be on the ballot at the same time, which might not be a bad thing, it might be good for everybody. But, you know, and they already pay more than our starting pay. So the problem is, you know, you've been in our system for a long time, not that everybody doesn't deserve a raise, but that starting pay is what's the killer. You know, after you've been here for a while and you work your way up and you pay your dues, you have, I mean, I'm not saying you shouldn't get more, but you, you, you know, you're stable. You have a job and you know where you're at, and we have good insurance, and, you know, it's a good place to work. But these guys can't, I love them all, but they can't last forever, you know, sooner or later, they're gonna retire. What we're not doing is building from the bottom up. We're not bringing in that, you know, enough of the new, new guys of, of, you know, at the, at the lower level, so that they can work their way up. And that's a problem. Um, you know, civil service is an interesting animal, I, I never had to fool with that till I got here, I still don't have a handle on it. It still is challenging, it's challenging for the municipal side of civil service as well. But this is an opportunity to, you know, make it right, to give our department some long-term stability. You all voted, since we've been here and for the eight years we've been together, we bought two new fire trucks, those are half a million dollars apiece. We just, we got it in last week, we bought a million dollar, it'd be one point six million dollars now, but we bought a million dollar ladder truck to replace the fifty-year-old ladder truck. Don't say these guys don't take care of stuff. So, you know, the old one, we needed that because we need it for our rating. So, you know, y'all have helped me invest two million dollars just in that equipment, not to mention the air packs, not to mention renovations at the, at the stations. You know, we, we've put money up, we will continue to support our first responders, but this is an opportunity to tell the story. And I wanted them to come tonight with the announcement, and I think they should come at every step of the way, because it's, it's a good way to connect with the community and to show people that, you know, we're not being greedy, we're not looking for this, you know, giant thing, but we gotta make it right, because for the stability and the long-term survivability of our department, we, we need those, we need that starting pay to be up. So, you know, uh, that's, that's why we're doing this. Yes, ma'am?
So, I want to ask the chief, do you guys have, like, marketing money to kind of market, you know, yard signs, whatever, to tell people, vote yes for the firefighters? Because you're gonna need that, to keep that in front of people's, um, minds, so that when they go to the polls.
It'd have to be a pack, you can't use public money.
Oh, okay.
So what we did in two thousand and three, I was the union president at the time, so we used union money.
Worked that for you.
And the guys, and the guys pulled money together to do the advertising and stuff, so no city money.
Right.
Right.
Was, so I didn't have to create, at the time, I didn't have to create anything.
Okay.
So I don't know how, we'll talk about it, I mean, we got, we doing this on November sixth? We got some time to sit down and, and work it all out.
Okay, just keep it in the minds of the voters.
And what's the date, what's the date it goes to the ballot?
In March.
Do you even know the date in March? I know it's March, but, okay, so it's like the end of March.
Yeah, I thought so.
Cool. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? All right, well, we can't thank y'all enough for coming, and now we move on to councilman's remarks. I'll start with Councilman Dog.
Well, Mayor, I wanna, um, thank everybody for supporting the Sugar Cane Festival.
Yeah, it was good.
This weekend, I had the opportunity to go help a little bit, and we got so many people to thank. But the main thing is, the amount of people that came in from out of town is amazing. It's amazing what it does for us, for these festivals or anything we do. And I want to thank so much the Sugar Cane Festival Board, that they do so much work to put this on, it's, no one can understand. And Mayor, I, the departments, the Public Works, the, uh, Police Department, they were just on talking. They, they were so good, they took care of everything, they were so nice, I, it was just, people don't understand how much work it is to put something, an event like this on, but how much people go beyond. They really do. And, uh, I had the opportunity of working where the people would walk in for a few hours, and do, I think sixty-five percent of these people from out of town, spending money.
Yep.
I know people, some people might say, hey, you closed down the street, but that's what it's about. People like that. And, 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 uh, the Police Department and Public Works, Mayor, they were, they were just.
On up.
They were on top of things.
Sort myself.
And, uh, I want to thank all the people that have the patience, and all the people that came out and supported it, because it is a big deal. And, um, it makes a city who it is, I mean, it's not, before, a few years ago, I was on the councils, like, in the calendar, it would send out the events, we would have a event a month. Now we got events all the time. So it says a lot about the mayor and administration and the council members for, for investing in the community, and that's what it's about. And, uh, I just want to thank everybody, because it was a perfect weekend, and, um, everybody did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
The weather was perfect for, uh, the event over the weekend, although Sunday did get hot. Um, I'd like to, um, let the public know that Iberia Comprehensive is gonna have their mobile unit on our Doray Pride property on Hopkins Street. So if you're someone who needs any type of medical attention, um, please go and take advantage of it. They'll be out there, they'll be giving you exams and whatever you need. Uh, if you're sick, they can, you know, diagnose you, get you your medication, um, they'll have the medication delivered to your house, so please take advantage of this. Um, we really want you all to, the people especially in the West End, to know that we, we recognize there's a need for a service, that service up there, and so we're trying to work at Iberia Comprehensive to bring that to you, so please take advantage of it. Second thing is, is that the mobile market, the food mobile market that we do every other month, is gonna be held this, um, October eleventh, um, at the West End Park, so please go out and get your groceries. Um, there'll be other vendors out there providing other services, so, um, please come out, there'll be medical services there as well, but there'll be other things that you need. So October eleventh, West End Park, uh, remember they take SNAP slash EBT, um, so if you have a card, you can use it there. Um, and then the last thing is, is that, um, the city is opening up the applications for Section Eight. You have to show up on October eighth to get your, um, number or your appointment time. Uh, and then you come back on the ninth to fill out your application. So if you are someone who is having a housing crisis and you're in need of assistance, please go out there and go early on October eighth to try and get an appointment time on October ninth, so that you may be able to get a solution for your housing, uh, situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, I had a beautiful time this weekend on Sunday in the parade. It was hot, it really was, but, um, I think the people who were with me enjoyed themselves as much as I did, or even more, in some cases. I was able to see a lot of people that I hadn't seen in a good while, um, walking the parade. I thought maybe I wouldn't be able to, to make it that far as hot as it was, but I danced part of the way, and I walked all the way and hugged people, sometimes I got behind my group, sometime I was ahead, it was just a blast. And I just want to thank all the people who came out, and everybody was just so friendly, everybody was waving, you know, it was, it was so nice to be there. So thanks to everybody, all the, uh, people who were responsible for it, they did a great job. And I did, uh, get to speak some, to some, um, police officers along the way, a couple of them that, that knew me, and that I knew, and everything was just wonderful. So hats off to the Sugar Cane Festival Association for that event.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, um, some food for thought, I'm getting a lot of calls on some of the roads, especially Week Street, a few of them that we're having some issues with. Just asking the public to be patient on our road program, it's coming, we're gonna get it done, but, you know, we, we, we gotta be patient with them, and, and, and I know there's some complaints, and also just, just some food for thought, you know? What would the Sugar Cane Festival be out, be like without a festival building? You know, it wouldn't be the same, wouldn't be the same. So the decision we made tonight is not only for this council, for this city, but it's for the festival as well, and I think it's a great decision.
Mr. Mayor, let's not forget about our museums. I mean, for twelve years, from day one, the council had to vote. How many hundred, I bet you over a hundred times, we had to vote on something for museums. You know, the museum, the roof, different things. So it's very nice that we supported this, the whole council, the different, four or five councils I sat on. We had to vote to build the first museum from scratch one, and then get into the second one. So I hope the museum people appreciate the support, the people of New Iberia appreciate their support. Sugar Cane Festival, Mr. Mayor? You had the knowledge to push. I've talked about it before, we braced that wall up by the steamboat. We braced, you, you went sending your crew on your own money to brace the wall up, the first wall of the Steamboat Pavilion. We saved it right before the Sugar Cane Festival of that year. And ever since then, you brought it to the council for different kind of monies we need to do, and the veterans, the veterans hollered at me, I mean, all the time, give us something, not, you know, it was nothing. We're getting nothing for them. We have a big bell, we have the veteran, it's so nice over there, it's unreal. But I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing the leadership and helping me, all my plaques that we put up this last week. Uh, we got a lot of good notice from the Broussard family for talking, and the ones that showed up, I appreciate it on this council. We had a very large turnout. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I want to remind people about the upcoming election, November the fifth, I think everybody knows that's coming up, but just a quick reminder, um, the last day to register by mail is October the seventh, in person, October the seventh, and online, October the fifteenth. Uh, does anybody know when early voting is? October the eighteenth is early voting, thank you, Ricky. Uh, so y'all get ready, your voice matters, your voice, your vote matters as well, uh. And also, man, I've been wearing pink for the last seven and a half years in October, if you hadn't noticed. Breast cancer wellness month, um, you know, get checked. And also, I, I learned over the years that men as well, um, are subject to, uh, breast cancer. So I've always tried to, uh, represent that and acknowledge that, so, um, that's, that's it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just thought about it, who's at the fire station right now? No, I do appreciate all of you guys showing up, that's really great that there's so many of you here, uh, to support the tax. So I just want to promote also, uh, kids getting involved in the community. Um, I mentioned it before, that I have the Free Garage Event happening, uh, it's gonna be on November third, it is at my house. Um, it is very good for the kids to come and get service hours, uh, to set up for the garage event, and if they want to stay for the event and help people haul stuff to their cars, uh, really easy work, but they knock out a lot of service hours. Some of them need those hours for different clubs in school. Um, so if you need to know more details, just give me a call, three three seven, five seven eight, eight five zero eight. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, our next meeting is October fifteenth, and with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Thanks.